Okay, we'd like to get started. We appreciate everyone that's here at City Council and all those who are watching in TV land. We've asked Chris Thompson to give us an opening prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered today to conduct the business of the city. We are grateful for the elective officials who spend so much time to help and make the decisions that will benefit the city. We're grateful that we can have so many blessings here and we pray that Thou will bless us that we'll be able to make good decisions and that we'll be able to have safety with our families. And we are so grateful for the precipitation that we've had during this time of drought. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Chris. I've asked Councilman Gordon to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Will the audience please rise? Repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Okay. Let's move down to public comment. Anyone from the public would like to come up and address the mayor and the council? Come up and state your name and you've got three minutes.
My name is Andy Byrd. I'm here to express a concern of my child was attempted kidnapped this Sunday in North Park here in Spanish Fork. The two men were within 24 hours released with no charges. Lack of evidence is what my understanding is. The facts are there were two prior incidences of these two gentlemen approaching children to get them into their van and take them is what was reported to KSL, the reporters, and put on the story that was aired yesterday at six o'clock. So my concern is, as a citizen, is what are these guys doing back out on the streets in Spanish Fork? Why are they allowed to be out here when I know for a fact what happened? There was no assault charges pressed against them from the city or from the police as they attacked me and I had to fight them off because they were still going towards them. They were, the one man was between my wife and child and myself and still going towards them. So my concern again is why, as a city, would we allow that? Why, as community, are we allowing these people to be back out on the street? I am understanding that these guys are also mentally ill, okay? Special needs, so to speak, right? I have a 24-year-old son that's autistic. I have a 13-year-old son that has Down Syndrome. If you don't think that I understand what special needs are and how people can work and function and understand right from wrong, you better talk to another person because I know that these people know what they're doing and they're working the system. Please help me, help the rest of these people. I'm blasting Facebook, I'm blasting your police department with overloading phone calls and I'm going to continue to do that. I will continue to rattle from the chain up. I'll go to the governor if I have to. I don't care. Something's gotta be done because it's not an isolated incident. On Facebook it was posting that they actually attempted to try to take somebody else from the Wendy's last night. I don't know if that is true, but that was what was posted and I don't know if that's been investigated or not. KSL will also be doing another follow-up story on this and trying to do more investigation and helping me figure out and get to the bottom lines of why our community, especially within our police department, because I think our police department failed us in not responding. I mean, responding was very good and I think that they did an amazing job there, but the follow-through. And then whoever makes the decisions on pressing charges or if there's enough evidence, I want my day in court because I'll go to jail if they didn't press charges because it was a fight and he hit me and I hit him, I'll go to jail, they'll take me to jail. I'll go turn myself in but get him off the street. Does that make sense? I am so willing to go as long as I can get off the street. I'm not afraid that it will happen to somebody else's kid. I saved my kid. I cannot let this happen to somebody else's kid. That's my two cents.
We appreciate you coming up and our hearts go out to you. I believe I'm gonna let, on this one, I'm gonna have the chief come up and talk a little bit about this and thank heavens that you guys and your wife were there to make this didn't happen any worse than it did. Thank you.
I'm sure there's others that might wanna speak as well on behalf of their families and maybe the community, but if I could just maybe address right off the bat the incident and what took place and also right off the bat, I'm very grateful that this family had the caregivers that they had, that they were very vigilant, that they saw something wrong and they addressed it immediately, that it didn't end up into a missing person or abducted child and no evidence to go on. So, you know, I applaud them as parents first and doing what a good parent should do. And the other things that I would just kind of, I've gotta be very careful on what I can and can't and do not say because it's still under investigation, but there is things that are allowed to be spoken of because it's public information. And, you know, these two individuals are, we do have their faces and their cars, descriptions out there for all agencies. In fact, we had some northern cities indicate that these guys were in their cities today and, you know, we're watching them as not only a Spanish Fork Police Department but as a whole entire law enforcement community here in Utah. We know that they've got some concerns and some issues that they need to deal with like Mr. Byrd talked about, but it's not a one and done deal. We're not done with these individuals. We're still watching them. And as far as the actual charges go, you know, gratefully, the officers that did respond or officers that did respond, one of them had some background on these two offenders and because of the background and dealing with them in other instances, he made a choice to arrest these two and put them in jail on the charge of attempted kidnapping and assault. That's what they were arrested for. As it goes through the judicial system, there's different steps that need to take place. You know, an officer can act on reasonable suspicion, which is a low level of belief that a crime is committed and this person committed that crime, and then it goes up to probable cause to believe that that person did it, a little bit higher level. And then once we get into the court system, it has to be proven beyond a reasonable doubt that they did do the crime. And so this officer with his background of information that he had from a previous encounter with these individuals, excuse me, one of the two individuals, he built his probable cause to believe that a crime had occurred and this individual committed the crime and so he needs to go to jail. And so that's what we write in our PC statements or our probable cause statements, that the judge and/or others, attorneys, look at that and then they weigh in on it to determine if a crime is committed and if this person committed that crime. And so that's one of the things I'm grateful for is we had some background on these individuals. They were known to us. One of my lieutenants had indicated in public information to the public that we know their background. We've been watching them, we understand a little bit about them and it's not by happenstance that we know these things, it's because we're doing our job. We're trying to protect the citizens. We are fathers, we are mothers, we are grandparents. We care about the community just like everybody else does and we'll do our job to the best that we can so that not only your children are safe, but our children are safe. And so that's where we're at with part of that, you know, they got released out of jail and the officer that took them to jail is perplexed. He's still digging. He was talking to some of the other investigators today about what else we could do. There is the assault charge that Mr. Byrd talked about. I've spoken with our city attorney staff and if the county attorney doesn't accept the assault charge, our city attorney's office is willing to pursue those charges. He doesn't have to take any further action. People who pursue a criminal charge in the courts are the state. A person doesn't actually file an assault charge. You report an assault and the state files that charge against the individual. It's not like a civil court case where you have to do, you have to be the complaining party. The state is the complaining party on the assault and Mr. Byrd is, in my opinion, is the victim. Gratefully, he is the size of man that he is and I think that he won the battle, but he still is the victim and we will pursue that. And just know that we're not done with these two individuals as far as watching them and following them and doing what we can within the law. We are doing all that we can. There is some legislation that we have to follow. If we don't follow that, then we're in court ourselves under a civil suit saying that we have taken away someone's civil rights, right to live or whatever the case might be, right to do whatever they feel like they have the right to do. So we have to follow that line, but we are gonna follow it as close as we can to protect our citizens, to protect our children. There might be more questions, more comments and more concerns, but truly know that we are doing our best to do our job and we're not letting the grass grow under our feet.
Someone else like, anyone else like to come and address us?
My name's Charity Meeke and I have a little boy who's 10 who goes to Riverview Elementary. Two weeks ago, on the way to school, he was riding his bike and somebody tried to stop him. He got scared, he rode to the school as fast as he could. On the way home, they were afraid they saw him again, so we had the police officers came. I live in Eureka. He stays with my parents when I'm in school, so we have no TV up there, we have no, we were kind of hillbillies. So on the way down this morning, I saw this. I showed my son a picture, I didn't say nothing. He identified the one as the guy in the park. So if we check into these other cases, I'm sure there's more than the two that got reported because my son, there was a police report filed on him, that's the guy. There's probably more than that. And we can't wait for something terrible to happen because they're not trying to take a child to have a playdate. They're trying to do something that is not gonna be okay. And we need to get it taken care of some way before we lose a child, before you have a bunch of overbearing mama bears in the park with their kids with carrying their concealed weapon waiting for the bad guy. Because nobody wants anything to happen to their child. We'll do what we, I will do what I have to do to protect my kid and, I mean, he will never ride his bike to school again, you know? And that's not fair. Our kids shouldn't have to be scared. So I don't know if we can look into these other cases and check with the kids and see if they recognize them so that we can get more evidence against them so that we don't have something worse happen. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. Anyone else like to come up and address us? All right, seeing none. And this is a very serious incident that happened and as a community, we all take it very seriously and all our police officers and all our citizens do. And, you know, we live in scary times and it's not just here in our community, but it's all over and I just, I'm so grateful that you were there to stop it before it got any worse and we hope that it never does. And so I can be assured that our police officers are doing everything they can within the law to make sure that we can stop this and get this taken care of. And so if you wanna talk to the chief after and our attorney, they'd be glad to talk to you about that after and we'll do whatever we can to make sure. Sure, you need to come up here so they can hear you.
Me being a little excited up here, I didn't mean that the police aren't doing their job.
I understand.
I misquote.
We know.
Our justice system, something's gotta be done.
Yes.
And that's my concern and...
Hey, we all have kids and we all have grandkids.
I know and I...
And we're the same boat with you. We feel you.
And so I, again, I can't thank the police department enough, the response time, how they were there. Because he just come back after me again and then they show up, boom, and he stopped and I was like, oh! So the response time's very good and...
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Andy.
Anybody can come up here. You've got something different. Need to state your name.
Austin Mock. I'm actually from a police family, actually former law enforcement. My question is, is what can we do? Apparently there were two other attempts before this. Even if investigation was ongoing, what can we do to make the public aware that there is a threat in our city? Like you said, we all have children and I understand some things may need to be kept secret, but even if you're watching them, like you say, at what point do we allow the public to know that there's a threat and we need to be more vigilant?
Well, I believe, to answer your question there, I believe that these pictures of these individuals are on the news and I think if, as citizens, if we see this, then we need to make sure our kids are, we know where our kids are and be very protective of what's going on. And so, and the police are doing the same. They're keeping an eye on these individuals the best they can. So, did you wanna come up and say something?
I just had a quick question.
Well, you gotta come up here, sorry.
No, that's fine.
You know, those 17 million people in TV land need to hear you.
My name's Brian Wilson, live here in town. I was just wondering if the police are at liberty to tell us whether the incident down at Wendy's happened? I've seen posts on some of the community sites and I saw something a while back about one of the guys, but did that, can we verify whether the Wendy's incident happened? That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll refer to the chief.
Junior, I don't think I'm gonna step out of bounds here, but I did hear that these two guys, they live out of their car. They have, maybe this is too strong, but they've been disowned by their mother and so they're basically living out of a van, you know? And so today I heard just briefly one of the investigators speaking in the hallway that these two guys have been harassing several different convenience stores such as Wendy's and other than one with Sonic, but basically it's making an order and then getting up to the window and then making harassment. I really don't know the circumstances other than that's what I heard in the hall.
Okay, thanks, chief. Anyone else who'd like to come up and address the council and the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilman Beck.
Thank you. I think the only thing I have to report is first attendant at Miss Spanish Fork, Jill McConnell, has stepped down and so we have extended the opportunity for second attendant Ashlyn Crockett to take first attendant and then last night Brooklyn Harris was offered the invitation to become second attendant and she's accepted that, so there'll be a little change in the royalty and that's all I have, mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Mendonal.
Just one thing, mayor. Thank you, meeting with the Utah League of Cities and Towns this last week. As the public well knew during the legislative session, the discussion of tax, of sales tax revenue in the state and the special session that might happen, might not happen, in discussing what to do about that across the state. Happy to report in some form that on the House of Representatives side, our legislator, Francis Gibson, is the representative that'll be heading up that part of it. I forget who is from the Senate side, but Francis Gibson will be our, on the House sponsoring side and we're keeping a close eye on that. The state is asking for recommendations and insight from the League of Cities and Towns, which basically funnels the recommendations from all the cities to trying to get to a place that is a broad-based tax policy and something that works for the whole state. So we'll keep an eye on that and maybe invite Representative Gibson here sometime to talk about it as well. That's all I have, mayor.
Right. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, mayor. Again, just appreciate everybody that was here on that topic. Thank you to the Byrd family for being courageous to talk about this. It's, we wanna get to the bottom of it, I think the thing that hurts my heart the most is to hear Trinity talk about her kid not being able to ride their bike to school and that's, in my opinion, crap because that's not fair. So I really appreciate, you know, everyone that spoke really to that. We all, I think is an understatement to say we're enraged that, you know, things like this can happen in our great community. So appreciate when people band together and make it better and I think that's what's happening here. Emotions are running high and I feel it too as a father of six, so appreciate you. Appreciate you very much. Appreciate, again, our police department and all they do. Chamber, we have a ribbon cutting for Ms. Shelley Jameson, Jameson Holmes, tomorrow at, I say tomorrow, I meant Thursday, at noon. It'll be at the Chamber offices, so invite anybody that'd like to come to that. Also, we have the, continue to go, on Friday nights. That's been successful and encourage everybody to keep supporting them. We'll have an event at the City Park Saturday, June 1st. From 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. is the Volkswagen Car Show. Encourage anybody to come check out that great show in the park. Last year was fun and Volkswagen's there for that. Movies in the Park is going to begin. Mary Poppins, it sounds like, will be one of our first ones and that's gonna be Friday, June 7th. That same night, of course, Friday night, so they have food trucks and that'll be our first movie there at the Chamber. And so that's all I have for the Chamber. Wanted to report that tomorrow we'll be meeting for solid waste district and approving this year's budget where we'll hold garbage rates, which is a good thing. And we will continue to talk about the land in Springville, selling that land and moving the transfer station to Spanish Fork as we began that process, so we look for a lengthy meeting tomorrow night that I'll have more to report on from that. I've been appointed to the Water Quality Board for the State of Utah and wanted to be mayor, so I'll have my first meeting there tomorrow up in Salt Lake and so looking forward to serving and as I was nominated by the governor and approved by the Senate, it's all new to me, just a nobody from Lake, and now Spanish. And so I instantly had street cred with Spanish Fork manages their water and so I'm just happy to be along for the ride and about this and water as this opportunity has proven itself to, and I have a chance, so looking forward to that. We had a field trip on last Friday. We went up to Ogden and looked at what they had recently done in a river restoration project. They made the river area more recreational, put your kayaks in the river and so we're looking at doing similar things along our river through the Spanish Fork area to make our river trail and river area more recreational and things like that. And that field trip was very eye-opening to see what Ogden Price has done, the city of Price has done something similar and so we've got from... That's, so we're very... Given to the low, high schools, all this...
Think that we could have, and just the thought, we're, I'm sorry you have... Hear the amber alerts and other situations and want, we have to be vigilant for coming and talking to important... And the last soul, mayor, had our... That's going to our house... Ringville, that is... It and... Or that, the thing... Previous, and count... Ever, Ogden, I had that, and with... Still working, going for... Our next, is in our. That, prepared, members of our service. It was, it was a pretty awesome experience to watch these large howitzers, and as they trained, and as they went through the operations. I'm grateful to them as they take, they are in our community, and so many of them have served, and there was some there that were brand-new. In fact, one of the officers that was doing the firing was his first time shooting live rounds, and they were hurling these 155 howitzers towards Harriman, and his first comment was, if I make a mistake, somebody loses a house. And so to watch the safety, and what they did, and what they went through to make sure that everything was safe, and everything was good, and the training that they do was, was pretty awesome to see. I'm grateful for those who serve our country. Veterans Day's coming up. If you have the opportunity, or you know somebody, say thanks to them. Simple thanks goes a long, long ways to these guys who take their time out, and serve and train to keep us safe in times of war, and many times, and we have some guard units that are in harm's way now, and hopefully they'll return safe to our community. Grateful for them. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, let's go to Spanish Fork 101. Kent, it's all yours.
Our 101 today is on about the elections. And it is an odd year, so 2019 means it's a municipal election, so every other year, so 17, 19, 21, will be a city election. This year, there are three council seats, and there's no term limits, so the existing council three could still declare and file for the same offices. But today, we're talking about giving a public service announcement to the community on the process, if others were interested in running for a council position. The deadline to, or the little window to file for city council, or for a city position, is from June 3rd to June 7th. Closes at 5:00 on the 7th, on that Friday, so it's from Monday to Friday. The primary election day is August 13th, and the general election is November 5th. Here's a map of our city, and anticipating maybe going to get District 18, maybe. So right now, we have 17 different districts, and that's how our town grows. Once it gets the population in a certain district gets so high, then they start dividing them and making other districts. And so depends on which area of town gets the new number, which area is growing the most.
We're not going to have to change our television channel, right?
Seven, SF 17? No, we'll go 18.
Yeah, that's what it's.
We can just have a channel, put westerns on.
Okay, we'll do that.
Grit TV.
So this is our town and the voting districts. In the years past, several years ago, we used to have a voting place, we used to vote in schools. Now we don't do that, we do vote by mail. And so this year will be no different than two years ago. We are going to do vote by mail. We contract with the county to do vote by mail. They administer the registrations, and we prepare our ballot based on who signs up. So to sign up for office, or to declare candidacy, you declare that through Spanish Fork. Then, once we get the names, we post those with the county, and the county then prints the ballots, mails the ballots, receives the ballots back, counts the ballots, and then gives us results. And that's the way the election will be done, is by vote by mail. So the only people who will get a vote, a ballot in the mail are those that are registered. So I encourage the citizens of Spanish Fork, the new ones that have just moved in, make sure you register at your new address, so when the ballot gets mailed, it gets to you. Because if it goes to an old address, it's going to be returned, undeliverable, and then you have to go figure out how to get a ballot after that point. Okay? So the cost of doing a vote by mail, with the county administering it, is if there's a primary, it's $32,000. If it's a general election, it's $32,000. So the total could be an estimate of our active voters. So we have 17,000 registered voters, the last time they did an election, times it by the dollar 80, that the county's going to charge us to administer the election. So if there's a primary, then it'll be $32,000. If we skip the primary, then it'll only be the general election in November. So again, the date that we need to remember is June 3rd through the 7th, and it closes at 5:00. So anybody that comes in after 5:00, they will not be a candidate on the ballot. They can also file for a write-in, which would be for the November election, if somebody in, you know, a month or two from now is saying, I think I want to do an election. They can't be on the ballot, but they can be a write-in candidate after that point, as long as they meet the qualifications. So this is the sample of the declaration of candidacy that the, a candidate would need to fill out. It's tailored here towards Spanish Fork City. The most important thing to remember is, you'll need to sign this. After I ask you a series of questions, to see if you're qualified, and you answer those correctly, then you'll sign this in front of me, and I'll notarize it, or attest it, that this is a valid declaration of candidacy, and your name will be added to the ballot. And then I'll notify the Lieutenant Governor's Office and the county that you are a candidate. So there is this paperwork that needs to take place, and you need to sign it in my presence, so, or the deputy's present. And so if you, we're going to probably post this packet on the city's website, but don't sign it at home. You need to sign it in my presence. Here's a list of qualifications. If you're wondering, how, do I qualify to be a candidate? There's just a few listed here. You need to be a registered voter of Spanish Fork City, the city you want to apply for. You must be a resident for at least 12 months prior to the November date of the November election. So if you moved here in October or November of last year, you would be for 12 months. If you moved here in January, then you wouldn't be within the 12-month window. If you're within an area that's annexed into the city that used to be county, but now, and you've lived there for 12 months, and then was annexed into the city, as long as that area was, you were in that, at that spot, within, for 12 months, you can be a candidate. Another one is a filing fee. The city does not have a filing fee. A lot of cities do have a filing fee. I know that Orem has a filing fee, just to keep all the BYU students from filing for part of their school projects. So they have a filing fee. We do not have a filing fee here in Spanish Fork. And also, the last one is not convicted of a felony. And so those are just the basic questions that I'll ask you, and you answer yes, that you meet those qualifications. There's also a pledge, affair, campaign practices, that you'll be asked to sign, telling you, stating you they were promised to be nice in the campaign. No collusions with Russia, or any type of those types of events would go on. And there's also a financial disclosure. So just ahead of time, you'll need to disclose who contributes to your campaign, and where you spend your campaign money, as far as if you're, if you're funding yourself, then you just fund it by yourself. You'll just have to declare where you're spending your money at. So there are some forms you'll need to file, and some deadlines when those are filed. Or if you don't file improperly, your name can be removed from the ballot, even though that you've started out on the ballot. Again, it's that first week of June, ending Friday. The June 7th is the deadline day, at 5:00. So I have the packets here. We'll try to get that same packet on our website, an opportunity for you to look at it at home, and read through that. If you don't have that access, and you'd like to come to my office, I can give you that packet. You can study it up, and, or you can file then. If we have seven or more candidates file, then we will need a primary, and that will be in August. And at that election in August, the top six candidates, who get the top six, most votes to the top six, they would advance on to the November election. If we have six or less file for the November election, then we do not need a primary, and we will just move those, whether it's one, two, three, four, five, or six, they would just advance directly to the November election. Again, these are the dates, the candidacy date, the primary date, and the general election date in November. And we are doing vote by mail. So there's the 101.
Thanks. Appreciate that, Kent. Consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move to, who we need to adjourn to redevelopment.
Motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendonal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Kent.
Are there consent items in RDA? I don't see any on there. But should I, no.
Sorry you get to hear me again. I'm going to share with you enough knowledge that you're going to be so smart at the end of this, okay? So the first thing we're going to talk about is, this is for the RDA budget. Last week, we talked about the city budget. The RDA is the city council themselves, wearing a different hat, being on the RDA board. And here is the budget for the RDA. These are the list of the RDA areas. It's an agency. RDA stands for Redevelopment Agency, but within that agency, there are redevelopment areas, so they're kind of called RDAs. And every time the state legislature gets together and make new laws dealing with RDAs, they create a new acronym, so they can keep the new laws by the new acronym. So we begin, early on, 25 years ago, we did, the city did their first RDA. And how many here have kids? These RDAs have been my kids. I've been babysitting RDA areas for 20, at least 25 years, and some of our children are graduating, and we're closing a couple of RDAs. So I want to tell you about each one of those, so you can get to know them before they're being retired, okay? So we have the North Industrial Park, Industrial Park RDA, and the Kirby Lane RDA. We have the Corona CRA. We have the Wasatch Winds CDA, and the Sierra Bonita CDA. We did, used to have some EDAs, but those lives, those children, they've done what they're supposed to do, and they've graduated, and we've closed them. So we've had a series of RDAs, or redevelopment agencies, develop, used, and then closed, and the property tax stuff is, continues on the way that it's normally supposed to go. So some main points I want to bring out is, this North Industrial one, you can see that there is no property tax, because it's closing. This year, we're in right now, for 19, is the last year that we're going to receive any increment, because we've received it for 25 years, and now that increment will close to the city, and the increment that we were capturing will now flow normally to the school district, to the county, and to the city, and the normal flow. Okay? Kirby Lane, it retires next year. So it's in its 24th year this year, and next year will be the 25th year. The Corona one, so you can see, we're estimating we'll get 425,000 possibly from the Kirby Lane one. The Corona one does not get property tax. It is the benefit using sales tax. And so as the city receives the sales tax, we're going to transfer what we do receive in the agreements into this CRA, and then pay it back out to the developer in that, in that way. The windmills, we've had them for a life of eight years, and this year, 2019, was its last year. And so the property tax that was being captured through the windmills now will flow through normally to the school district, and to the city, and to the county. And so that one is retiring. So we have the North Industrial and the Wasatch Winds, both are going to retire, as far as not getting any more new revenue coming in as far as the property tax. There are still some monies there in those accounts, but the money has to be spent on projects in that specific area, or adjoining area around there. And I'll talk about that in just a second. And the Sierra Bonita is the Young Living Property Tax. So there are two that we're actually getting property tax on in this fiscal, this budget year, and then one for the sales tax, while these others two are going to be closing. Okay, to zoom in just a little bit more, so I talked about, so this one's closing, this one's got one year left, this one's not property tax, it's sales tax. This one is closing, this year we're in, and this one has eight years left for the Young Living expansion that they did. Okay? So here is kind of a map of where these are all at. So I'll just briefly show where they are. So I got North Industrial, which is closing. It's kind of a long, skinny one. It goes around Shopko area, and down Main Street, and then it goes around Longview Fiber, or Capstone, whatever is there now. And so those are the areas that capture property tax in that area. Kirby Lane is over across I-15 by Hedro, or Sapa, out into that area, along Highway 6. Wasatch Winds is up in the mouth of Canyon, where the windmills are. This one right here needs to be, I think it's supposed to be Corona, but it says Canyon Creek, but I think it's really Corona, so we'll correct the map on that one. And then up here, Sierra Bonita is the Young Living one. So you see, some of these other ones were created in anticipating that a company was going to be coming, in some of these areas, Dominguez, North Airport, Front Mountain, but those businesses never materialized, and so now those, the area is created, but there's no capture there, because there's not any asset there. So in this area, we talked about North Industrial. It's closing, but there is an ending balance of $2.4 million, which is a pretty hefty sum, that's left in there. So we've captured $6 million over the 25 years, a little bit every year, and we've spent $4 million improving things in that area. We did a lot of Main Street improvements and things in that area. But there is some funds that can be used inside this boundary area, or adjoining it. And so it's anticipated that a lot of the improvements along this road at the airport, some of those funds will be used there. But it can be used, again, for Main Street, for the off-ramps. You should think of Shopko's area, in that area, that some of those funds could be used in those areas. So those are some potentials to use up that money. Kirby Lane doesn't have any, because we have captured all that was available. We have one more year, and we've also used that to put in the road between the showhouse and Hedro, and to improve some of the development in this whole area. So we've used up that money. We've got one more year of income, but it's already spent. So it's just going to pay itself back during that year. So there's no funds left in the Kirby area. The Corona one is just the sales tax, and it's this area here, which most of that goes back to the developer. At this point, after two years, we have a balance that comes to the RDA that, the portion that's probably going to be for housing, the low-income housing, is $30,000 that's collected. I'll show you that quickly. So this is kind of a little spreadsheet that shows the year that it was created. So we created it in 91, got triggered in 94, and then we started collecting it for each one of those years. And as we go in five-year increments, we got 100% of the increment in those years, and it went to 80, then 75, 70, and then 60. it went to 80, then 75, 70, and then 60. And so this is the last year, and so last year we had 343,000, and that's the total amount that we collected through that RDA. In next year, this 300,000 that is collected in that area will just normally go back to the taxing entities, which is the school district, where we have been capturing that for us, then now that, that capture stops. Here's the Kirby Lane area. We've collected 6 million there, and we have this one more year left on its 25-year life in down to the 60%. And back when this one was created, there was an agreement with Alcoa back there that we would have to share with them, a portion of like, I think it was 70 or 70% of that increment went back to them so they would come to our city. And since that initial investment is paying off now as the property tax that was collected, and now will continue on into the future, providing for the school district, for education, and for the county, different things. So it was a good benefit for the community, and now it's continued to benefit the community. And that closes next year. Wasatch Winds, it's now closed, but the balance that's left in Wasatch Wind is about 140,000, which needs to be spent in any type of improvements in this area. I'm not sure where the, that trail system to the Bonneville goes, that's an option.
Right through it.
Right through the middle of it? So there are $140,000 that is available to be spent in that area and any type of improvements that would benefit that area. Is that good news?
Yes.
That good? Okay. Already spent, okay. I thought that was good news.
It's old news, he's already, he's used to it.
So here's a little summary of how the Wasatch Wind works, since it's our children, one of my children that's now retiring, is for the last, it was for 10 years or for that dollar amount. So you can see how many years it went. It didn't go the full 10 years, so it went that full years and then a partial year until we met the commitment to the windmill people that we would rebate back to them 65% of what they paid. And so this is what the windmill people pay every year in property tax. The agreements that was developed is 65% to the windmills, 30% was divided up amongst the school district, us, the county, and the Central Utah Water Conservancy District. So we divide that up and split that out each year, and then the RDA was able to collect this month. So if you can see, the portion that's left there is part to the city is this, and that's where the 140 comes from, is we've been holding on to it until the end. We haven't spent that part of it. Okay? The Sierra Bonita one is the young living. Young living pays property tax, and we rebate back to them 65% of it, and then the school district gets a portion of that same property tax, and then the RDA keeps it. So what's left in that one, most of it goes out to other people, so there's about $4,000 left that's there. And it does have eight more years to run its course of them capturing back 65% of their property tax. Again, here's the budget. If you roll up those five areas to a total budget, this budget then becomes part of the city budget in our special revenue fund that we're anticipating that we're going to budget a million and a half that's going to be used through this way. So we do have 2.5 million here. We didn't budget 2.5 million. So once the project is ear-tagged, and we'll bring it back to the council and say, "Council, here's a project to spend that 2.4 million on it." It's not been itemized specifically to a dollar amount yet, and so that's, we're waiting to have the project. Same with the windmills, there's 140 there that's waiting for that one. Okay? That's all I got. So what you need to do today is to adopt the tentative budget, which is right there, as the tentative budget, and then we'll have a public hearing on that budget next council meeting.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the tentative budget for the RDAs.
Second.
A motion by council member Beck, a second by council member Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If that passes, I'd entertain a motion to go out of RDA.
Motion to reconvene back into city council meeting.
Second.
A motion by council Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Lovely. Well, so is that where we're going? Going to the discussion?
River Bottoms.
Yeah, okay. Well, there was a thing we might have switched.
We talked about.
Oh yeah, she's not here yet.
Okay, she's not here. All right.
Yeah, we've got.
Okay, let's do the River Bottoms discussion.
Someone from the Home Builders Association would like to be here for, to impact this stuff. We'll see, we'll wait until, hopefully she gets here, she's in Provo right now. But we, thank you, Mayor, we want to chat a brief moment or two about the River Bottoms vision. Hopefully you all watched the, the Facebook Live, riveted to that. It was a little windy. Somebody actually said on there that they wanted that table and, and table to blow over. Come on, man, that's mean. So, we've been working on the River Bottoms Vision project for the last, honestly, about 18 months. And it's been a project, the idea, the goal, the hope, is to put together a plan that, that allows for what we would call the hopeful proper use, land use of the River Bottoms. Today, the land use in the River Bottoms is county-designated, so it's actually zoned, it's in the county, it's not in the city's limits for the most part, and their current development rights as given by the county, which is about one in five, right? One home per every five acres. So as we've considered the River Bottoms, you have that as kind of a baseline scenario. And if they were to be annexed into the city, what would the, what would the land use be like? And our general plans for the last many, many years have said that the River Bottoms would have no development, it'd be one in 40. One home in every 40 acres. And, and so that's different, that's a less dense land use than even in Utah County. So with that kind of a designation, that area probably never would come into the city's limits. And so if there's any desire by the residents of Spanish Fork to have any land use control in that area, then it would need to be annexed into the city, and there'd need to be some reason for those residents to want it to be annexed. A lot of times utilities play into that, but they're generally looking for some kind of density. So we've gone through the River Bottoms study, and it's been, it's been very exhausting. Hopefully everybody knows Brandon, Brandon Snyder are one of our planners here. We've done surveys, landowner interviews.
Correct, a lot of outreach.
A lot of outreach, a lot of public meetings.
A lot of public participation.
And through all of that, there have been maybe two or three very specific values that have come through, depending on who you're talking to. Generally speaking, the residents of Spanish Fork have said they, they want to see it stay open. Residents, not landowners, residents of the River Bottoms.
I think leave it as it is is the most common phrase that we've heard from the residents of Spanish Fork City.
Then landowners are split, as you can imagine. Two different camps, one camp, those landowners that have already bopped the ground with a development purpose, we already have landowners that aren't farmers but are developers, they say, "Let us develop." And landowners that are currently farming, that want to farm for the rest of their lives, that say, "We don't want any development." So with those voices speaking in the room, how do you answer anybody without maybe upsetting somebody else, right? It's a, it's a no-win proposition where you have such a split in those voices. And so knowing that we'd probably get that, and then getting it, we've tried to put together a couple of different development scenarios through the work of Logan Simpson to best put those voices into place. And so last week, we posted on our website these three different development scenarios. You've got access to them, the public has access to them, and people are beginning to digest at least what the basic ideas are. So what Brandon and I wanted to do is just make sure that you, one, know how to get there, so go to the Spanish Fork website, get into the community development pages, go into planning, mouse over River Bottoms, and you get to this River Bottoms vision page, and you go to that development scenarios.
So you can also even just do spanishfork.org/riverbottoms?
Scott is very efficient.
Someone's easier.
Turn left, turn right, go here, go there. He just says, "Jump on the highway and get there." Spanishfork.org/riverbottoms.
Scott, just go up.
Click on the development scenarios, and it'll pull up this image that we put out there. And this has three development scenarios as well as a floodplain. Let's pull up that floodplain for a quick moment, it's the last page, I believe, of the four. And the floodplain shows you that there are different colors. This very, very dark blue in the middle really travels right along with the river. That's called a floodway. In layman's terms, you might describe that as the river channel, plus or minus a few inches, a few feet. That's the river channel. That's where you expect the river to be floodway. No development can happen in the floodway. That's governed by, by federal laws that way. Then you have this lighter blue area here, and, and kind of along the river, that is called the 100-year floodplain. It doesn't mean that there's going to be a flood every 100 years. What it means is there's a 1% chance that there will be a flood this year. That's what the term 100-year floodplain means. Has nothing to do with time. It's a percentage-based number. The last time we saw significant flooding in this area was in 1983 and 1984. So if it's a 100-year floodplain, we're good for another, what, 60 years? That's not how it works. It's again, a 1% chance. The 500-year floodplain is this lighter, or I guess darker shade of blue, and it's not that we'll have a flood there in 500 years, but it's a much smaller percentage every year chance that we'd have a flood get to there. So the basic principles that we've, that we've got in these different scenarios, as Logan Simpson has put this together, is that no development generally would occur in these areas of 100-year floodplain, where we have greater likelihood that it could flood to some degree. Now, we have a snowpack today, well, it's melting right now, but we have a snowpack in 2019 that was at flood level. Now, that means, what I mean, when I say that, up in the mountains, there was enough snow in the basin of the Spanish Fork River that it could flood. It didn't, it hasn't, and it probably won't. We're now getting to the tail end of the melt. The reason it didn't flood isn't because there wasn't enough snow up there, but because we had a favorable melting season. We started actually melting in the mountains the 1st of April, and it's still going on six, seven weeks later. That's an ideal scenario, very, very steady, sustained river melt. If we have different circumstances, it had been colder in April, and then all of a sudden May 10th hits, and bam, we're in the 80s and 90s. It all melts in a week or two weeks. This year, we would have seen floodwater levels with the snowpack that we had. So it's not a function of, do we get snow up the mountains? In fact, in the last 10 years, we've had three years of snow levels in the mountains that could have flooded. So it's not a function of, will it snow enough to flood? It's really a function of, will it melt? And how will the spring be? And thankfully, we've been, we've been spared that. So we've been, we've tried to, through this process, we've, we've tried to preserve at least that flood, that 100-year floodplain without development. That's, that's the scenario. I think, let's go to one, two, and three. I'm going to let Brandon kind of talk of the merits and differences between scenarios one, two, and three. If you need to.
Yeah, thank you. So the main thing that we see with scenario one is the balance of the most two distinct opinions, and so one is allow for development in the River Bottoms, and the opposite of that is no development in the River Bottoms. So what we did is kind of highlighted some boundaries, and so we do have the floodway here, we've got the southern bluff, and then we've got this dashed line which could represent a future roadway, which we can discuss later. But that would kind of be the northern boundary of what we just saw on the floodplain map as far as the 100-year floodplain, and so we're respecting that and not allowing potential development in there. And so the, the idea with the TDR is you're taking those rights, developable rights that would have been allocated to these properties, and allowing them to be transferred elsewhere, whether that's in the River Bottoms or outside the River Bottoms. So in this scenario, the idea would be that you'd take these rights and potentially allow them here and here, and then as well as an option for more intense uses along Main Street. The second scenario is similar to the first. The only main difference that you're going to see, and this was an insight that came out in a meeting that we had as far as gathering input and feedback as far as moving forward with the TDR, is that a real benefit to the community is the view that we have from Main Street of the River Bottoms area. And so if you can picture, when you're on Main Street looking towards the mouth of the canyon, you get the mountains in the background, up in front of you, you've got the entire River Bottoms on display. It's a beautiful view, and it is one of our gateways to our community, and so that would, it was shared, and many of us agree that that would be something to consider as far as preserving that view. And so it's kind of hard to see on this PowerPoint, but we've got reduced areas where we'd see development along Main Street, mainly it's where we presently have some development taking place, or existing development in place. If we jump to scenario three, oh, sorry, one too far. So what we've done is we've anticipated that all of the developable rights would be transferred out of the River Bottoms except for those that would be allowed on this south bluff. So if you pick, if you can picture in your mind, south of the river, we have some trees, and then we have the bluff where the elevation changes rapidly. So up along Powerhouse Road, we'd still allow for some of those developable rights to be transferred there, but then the remainder of those units would need to be allocated somewhere else within Spanish Fork City limits. And then just to clarify, you know, obviously, as Seth or city administrator mentioned, there is that option that it remains in the county under their jurisdiction, and so that could be looked at as, you know, I guess you could say a fourth development scenario, as far as it relates to TD and, TDR, excuse me.
Scenario one.
Uh-huh. Can we drop down to that?
So you know, so, so this, this stuff, this stuff here, undevelopable, do you know what kind of acreage we're talking here to develop?
Uh, yeah, so we did some number crunching with our GIS department, and let me grab that real quickly.
And Brandon would like to go through every piece of paper that he's got here.
I loaded for bear.
Good. Well, we'll give you the same word of encouragement I give to Chris Thompson is Reader's Digest version.
While he's pulling that up, I should, maybe should have prefaced with this, tonight, we're just giving this to you as kind of a high, a high-level introduction to the work that we presented on, on the Facebook Live and put on the website. We, we want to have some public input, which we'll get, we can get in a number of different forums, we can get through putting out a survey, we can get through having a public meeting. Probably be great to have a public meeting, allow for some comments, and frankly, because the public, the planning commission and you would maybe have the same kind of a public hearing, maybe it'd be better to have one meeting where it was a joint, and we all just can be together and hear the same feedback from whomever, if you want to have a, a public meeting of that sort. But Brandon, while he's pulling that up still, the TDR is a phrase, transfer of development rights, and that's, that's not an, that's not a new concept, however, it is new to Spanish Fork. We, we don't have TDRs in this, in our city, but some neighboring cities have used them and have used them well. The basic concept is, we want to keep this area open, so in this map, this, this lighter green color, we want to, we want to keep that open. And so we, in, in order to keep that open, we allow one, the one unit that would go right where my laser pointer is, that one unit won't go there, but we allow for it to go here. And so everybody would have some kind of a base density. So using the county's densities, for example, you have one unit per five acres. The concept is, so if everybody has a base of one unit per five acres, then you say, "Well, we'll take that one unit and we'll put it over here," and so now you can have, you could have up to one unit per acre. We'll, we have to, this is still a work we need to do together to decide these numbers, but you take that one. together to decide these numbers, but you take that one acre from here, put it there, and you say, this can be as dense as, and you set the amount, one unit per acre, two units per acre, one, a half a unit per acre, you set the amount, but they get the ability to have that greater density, not just because, like up here, you have that density that's allowed by the zone. You get that additional development density because you bought that development right from this landowner. The concept is, we don't want this landowner, because of his proximity to the river, to get the shaft. He has ground that's good, it's been a great farm ground, but when it comes time to develop, we're saying, we want to not have development that close to the river, so we transfer his development rights to another place. He can actually monetize that in one city to our, near to us. They actually printed certificates, real, very, very real certificates, and this landowner might have gotten 15, or 20, or 30, whatever the number is, and he has those. And if landowner Beck says, hey, I want to do some projects, and I can, I have some density I can put in here, it makes sense for me to add some density because I can spread my costs, so I want to buy those. And there becomes a market for that, and they are valued in the tens of thousands of dollars. And so that TDR concept has worked and gives landowners in these areas the ability to get some value, some development value out of their property, but then they still hold the ground. And so this may be something that's great for a farmer that wants to sell away the development rights and keep farming, but they were able to at least realize some increase because of selling that development away. It's a great concept that allows for, like I said, that monetization, but also preserves that open space. Do you find your numbers?
So do we, you got the numbers? Sorry.
So the way they broke it down was actually separate than the tracks, and so we do have, if we include the 100-year, we're basically looking at, and this is excluding city-owned property and streets, we're looking at just roughly over 1,000 acres. And so, but just north of that dashed line in the light tan, I don't have an exact number for you.
So this, the 1,000 acres would be this undevelopable?
The 1,000 acres, I believe, would roughly be bluff to bluff, minus our city-owned properties. And, yeah, minus streets and city-owned properties already, which, we own the golf course, we own the 65 acres here, and we actually own 40 acres right over there. So about 1,000 acres inside of the bluff, excluding those things that we talked about.
So, if they were developing, and we were improving this river causeway, and that's what we've been, we've argued and look at, use those impact fees, then would we have that, where we would, he's gonna take that and go, I don't know, somewhere in Spanish Fork and build that?
So we're kind of talking two different projects. One is the river bottoms, and then one is the Spanish Fork River Restoration Project, and so that's a different project, but the timing is similar. And so depending on what direction we go with the river bottoms development-wise, you may see that tie-in directly to the river restoration project as far as additional recreational access, or preserving access to the river itself along the entire river bottoms.
I have a question. So we're gonna put this out to the public for them to give us feedback of what scenario they like, right?
We can.
Is that what we're doing? Do the job? Okay.
We can do, we can gather more. We have gathered a lot of public feedback already, through the research that we've done. We've gathered a lot of public feedback. We've got these different scenarios. We can gather more public feedback, or through a survey, or we can gather that public feedback through public meetings. We can do both. You can say, we've heard you already, we've got these, and we're gonna put it together. At this point, we just need to chart a course and...
That's what I was wondering, my next step.
The commitment we made with Logan Simpson, the consultant, was, as we move forward with the plan, creation, and then adoption, the timeline that was presented to the public did provide the opportunity for, for instance, if the council decided that the TDR route was a good direction to continue traveling, then there is an option for some additional survey work if there needs to be, you know, any input as far as which scenario we'd like to pursue as far as adopting.
If you want to have this scenario, then you could basically fold, if the river bottoms were like this, and you say, the river's right in the middle of my hands, you're gonna fold the development rights out. You can, you just peel the development from inside, you know, closest to the river, and you put it out, and maybe double, double whatever the density would be on that outside layer. But if you, through the course of your discussion, say, you know what, we want scenario three, for example, that has no development in the river bottoms. Where do you want to move that? Where do you want to move those development rights to? Well, that's gonna be somewhere else, and if it's in this part of town, or that part of town, wherever it is, we need to have a receiving zone, because there would be whatever those units, you know, whatever number of units, for 1,700 acres or 1,500 acres, you'd have a lot of units. And if whatever the density would be there, they could have another 400 or 500 units. We want to have a good discussion about that, because you're moving them away from, you know, the proximity of the river. One other scenario, this is scenario four, five, six. One thing you could do as a community is you could buy the river bottoms. One way to preserve the river bottoms is to buy it. How much will that cost? I don't have any idea, but I could spitball a good number for you, and it'd be somewhere between 40 and 60 million dollars. That's a lot of money, and we don't have, we don't have that kind of as a city. As a community, we don't have 40, 50, 60 million dollars where we can buy 1,000 or so acres in the river bottoms. But if the community value collectively is, we want to preserve the open space of the river bottom so badly that we're willing to buy it, then maybe that's an option. In Park City, just this last November, so six months ago, they had a ballot issue where they raised, they put on their ballot to raise property taxes to spend 64 million dollars over a 20-year period, a bond for 64 million dollars to purchase what they call Treasure Hill, and I believe it passed significantly. And so the residents of Park City committed, we will bond, we will raise our property taxes to the tune that we can purchase Treasure Hill, Treasure Hill is synonymous to the river bottoms, to the tune of 64 million dollars, and that's what they did. That was their community value. I think that same could apply here. If that's what the community value is, that we want this to be open, we're so, we so want it that we're willing to pay for it. 50 to 60 million dollars, to maybe put it in real terms, 40 to 60 is the range. Again, it just depends on when, property value, cost, and things like that. But it would be an increase in the individual property tax on the average home, 15 to 25 dollars a month, which is about 180 to 300 dollars a year for, depending on how much, 20 to 30 years. So it's a sizable commitment, and not necessarily one we're saying that we should do, but if that's a community value, then you could certainly put that as development scenario four, or five, or six, you know, whichever one, and we can talk about that.
I think something we heard, and I'm sure all of you are aware of it, is the trail and the asset that that has become for the community. And so one of the feedback that we, some of the feedback that we did here kind of goes in line with what Seth is sharing with us, but it's on a reduced scale. And so we did give feedback saying, hey, the trail is what we can enjoy and recreate and use on a regular basis. And so if we can only preserve a portion of the river bottoms, some of the feedback we've heard is just widen that area, and so it becomes more of like a linear park, which obviously, then you wouldn't be purchasing up the entire river bottoms, but a smaller portion.
I know other places have done combinations of that, where the landowner deeds part of their ground and gets some credit for that, you know, along.
Yeah, in one of our neighboring cities, they would get, I don't remember the exact number, but say it was, they get one unit per acre, and if they would deed the land to the city, they would give them 10 units to the acre, or something like that. So that there's a significant inducement for them to turn that money into a public use, and they netted out a significant increase in those transferable development rights. Okay, so we've given you these scenarios. There's no action that we're looking for from you tonight, but you need to have those in front of you, and we need, we still have a lot of work to do to carry this to its completion. We've given you the scenarios, so we need to, if we want to have a public meeting, if we want to get some public feedback, some responses to the, to these development scenarios as we've identified them, we can do that. And we need to, if we're gonna do something that has TDRs, then we need to, we need to build and create what that is in our ordinances. And so, what feedback? Any thoughts?
Can they just respond on Facebook, or is there a place they can respond?
There isn't a good place on Facebook at the moment. We can create a survey, send it out, if that, if we want to get some feedback from the public, which Scott's got, Scott's got the ability to do that and can do it very quickly. And like I said, we've already done a lot of surveys, so I don't think we want to...
So we've had a lot of feedback.
We don't want to do, I don't think we need to do another survey, but if you want to have a place where they can type some comments and give you your thoughts, then we can, we can do that in a collectible forum. It wouldn't be 50% like this one, or something like that. It would just be more narrative commentary.
I think this is something that, you know, now we can take and look at it as a council, and, you know, we can get feedback from people.
Okay.
And as a council, we can discuss it and come back with some of the scenarios that we feel comfortable with and from the feedback we're getting, you know, something like that.
Okay, and as you discuss it, give us some direction if there's anything we need to do. If there's anything you want us to do as we review it, if you want us to put together anything, future meeting or anything like that as well. And I think that's all of it.
What a great work. Really appreciate all of the work.
We only get one shot at making this right, so I'm glad we're taking up the time and effort to, we're putting a lot of time and money into this, so, you know, this isn't just something we're just doing on the fly, so.
The echo of planning this, of people that, residents that might just be coming to see, you know, option one, two, three, or four right now, and like, oh, this is what you've done, hard to see the back two years behind the scenes of work, and not really even behind the scenes, but public meetings of people coming and giving their input. But beyond that is the, is the, and I think the county has talked to us over and over again about the importance of planning this huge, this big of an area that's not inside your city, and spending the money to try to get it right is something that your department, Seth, and Dave, and everybody should be applauded for trying to get something right.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And just one additional plug for the website. As Scott has indicated, we can just go to spanishfork.org/riverbottoms, where you can navigate through the planning department. But we actually do have all of the original information that we've gathered, and so we've got the original survey, we've got the vision document that was prepared in preparation of the plan document, and so, and then also a link to the Facebook video. And so if anybody is new to what's taking place, they can quickly gather some background there on the website.
Great. Thanks, Brandon. Okay, let's move. Now the audience showed up. We can move into the public hearing.
Scout.
Let's go to A, Resolution 19-11, Adopting a New Impact Fee Facility Plan. Take it away, Chris.
Okay, the Reader's Digest version of this is that overall, the impact fees are going up by 500 dollars. If you scroll up, there's a graph.
On the computer.
All right, to the graph, right there. Basically, when we compare ourselves to cities with similar utilities, similar impact fees, and in the area, that takes us from the lowest to kind of the low-average position. A lot of the changes, if you go back, one of the major changes was wastewater, as we anticipate, some major changes at our treatment plant. And overall, our impact fees, they correct every year. They're based on actual projects that are funded or bonded and completed. They're very fair. New development pays exactly the impact that they have on our systems, and, but the only way to really do it fairly and in accordance with the current legislation is to update it every year as we see it, and so that's what we do every year.
Right. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Menon Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public that would like to come up and talk to us? We'd love to hear you, and thank you for rushing over here.
I can't believe I made it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We were stalling for you.
Oh, you're so great. I do love Spanish Fork. I love Spanish Fork a lot. And you know what? Chris is correct that looking at them every year is the best thing to do, and I was not a fan of this. Was like, I mean, I was like, what are we talking about? Because everybody does it so differently. But now that I've had this paradigm shift and got my brain around it, it makes sense, because we're paying on what is happening and not what you think may happen in 2018, I mean, 2028, or what the prices may be then, or what it's going to be. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna get to that, but that's okay.
Thank you. I'm Deanne Hewish, Utah Valley Home Builders Association. I reside in Orem. Thank you. Oh, I gotta just take a breath, huh?
There you go.
I've just been rushing to all these other city halls. But I do appreciate that the city looks at it every year, tries to reevaluate what the costs are, what's currently happening, and not trying to estimate, or guess, or project, and even everything from population growth, which we sometimes, we look at people going, you're not gonna grow 6%. But, you know, whatever it is, it's all accurate. And so unfortunately, yes, wastewater has to be treated. We have to have a lift station. We have to do this. I did have some comments from some developers and builders after I shared the drafts of the impact fee facility plans with them, and basically, everybody says, it is what it is. And we're thankful that Spanish Fork is taking the aggressive kind of way of looking at this to provide for future citizens and economic growth, which is vital. It's fast. We all know what's happening with affordability. We all know what's happening with the growth. The economic, Kim Gardner's Institute just had a recent statement come out and said that without Utah County, we wouldn't even be in the place that we're in as first place of growth. It's Utah County. And Spanish Fork is bearing a lot of it. We know that. Thank you for entertaining, let us have these forms and reports early, so we can go through them and not have to look at them afterwards and hope that it was done right. We appreciate that. Any questions?
Thank you.
No, thanks for being here, Deanne.
Thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. I know you've been busy tonight.
We won't tell chief police that you might have spent...
I did not.
Okay, see, that's amazing. Good job.
I parked legally, too.
Okay, any other comments? Oh, guess not.
I move we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. If I would entertain a motion on this.
I move we approve ordinance 1119, Impact Fee Enactment Ordinance.
What? You do what?
Well, you need to do 19.
Oh, sorry.
You did, you're doing 1119.
I skipped early. Yep. I move we approve Resolution 1911, Adopting a New Impact Fee Facilities Plan.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Ordinance 11-19, Impact Fee Enactment Ordinance.
So there are two aspects to doing an impact fee. Actually, there are three. You have to have an impact fee facilities plan. That plan identifies the projects that you will need that are based on growth, and estimates the timetable that you will need that in. And then you have to have an impact fee analysis that looks at that plan, does the analysis... And then you have to have an impact fee analysis that looks at that plan, does the analysis on it, takes your projected growth rate, and then comes up with an impact fee. So the council has to approve the impact fee facilities plan, which you just did. And you also have to adopt the impact fee enactment ordinance, which we'll do next. So the impact fee facilities plan lists all of the projects that we need. There are, as I understand it, several hundred on there. So as projects get paid off, they fall off, and as new projects get started, they come on. So I understand we've added about 30 to 40 new projects with this facilities plan. So based on the impact fee facilities plan, the impact fees are, as you see there, some of them go down a little bit, some of them go up a little bit. The exception we've already talked about is sewer. What that tells me is we have an aging plant that needs some major upgrades, perhaps even some lift stations in order to accommodate our growth. So you can see that almost doubles. But everything else is pretty close to what it was, and then some even go down. So with that explanation, I don't know, I need to repeat anything that Chris has said. This is a public hearing and we can take any comments and act on it. Now, by state law, the impact fees don't become effective for 90 days, so this will become effective in late August.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll move that we go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comment from the public? Sit down, Dale.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 11-19, Impact Fee Enhancement Ordinance.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
That passes. Gordo?
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming, and drive safely going back.
Thanks, Deanne.